Four thirty, call the meeting to order. Get a roll call.
Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Here. George, can you pray for us here please?
Most gracious, heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. Continuing prayers, Father, for our service men and women overseas and at home. And Father, for our first responders. For their safety. We ask, Father, continue to watch over the farmers as they're completing their spring planting and getting ready for the summer. And we ask that the rains be adequate. Be the best word I can say. We ask all these things, Father, in Son's precious name, amen.
Yes, for the pledge.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move the agenda. Support.
Moved by George and supported by Tim. To prove the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Any public comment? Brief public comment?
Very brief.
Okay, okay.
Very brief.
Thank you, everybody. Jim Wheeler from Peter Greshit. We left out some information for you to have, just to talk about. It's our annual report for last year. This kind of summarizes some of the things that we accomplished. And one of the highlights is the total projects that we've been involved with in the county since it started in seventy eight. Two point one billion. Real money, so it's pretty significant along that. And then the other end of it, bookmarks it that we've been involved with companies that it's about a little over a third of the workforce, fifty four hundred. That, we don't accumulate it up, it's net jobs. So unfortunately, if we lose somebody or some of those, we don't count it towards that, so. To have it, I also, I think everybody's seen the updated Jeep that talks about renewable energy taxes that we had, that this year's actually was down about seven hundred thousand from last year's totals. But next year, none of the Heartlands project, which there are seventy two turbines that will be coming on. Now that we'll see a next year's number that will increase this number back up, plus any of the solar projects that get completed this year will be in that circumstance. Just so happened, just as a I have a note that Sunday I was driving back from up north. Middle of the afternoon, I looked at my thermometer card, ninety degrees. There wasn't a wind turbine spinning, it was dead calm in the afternoon. And that's the time when you want to see the solar panels going. That's, you know, that new array of it, because that's the offset to it when you have so there's no power going on the grid from any of the renewal from the turbines, but that's when you put solar power. So just kind of as a note to why we're pursuing some of those as we go forward. Kind of the other things, I better give a couple of highlights here to Shelley who, in your package, Yo and Yo's review of our financial statements was in there. We do an audit every four years. And then reviews the other years of it, but clean bill of health, as we've always had it, Shelley does a great job of keeping track of everything. It's like at the bank, they never let me touch the money and everything's good. So it was a pleasant thing from that. I will, Casey's a little under the weather today, but she's the one to put all this together, so. Without her, we wouldn't see the things that we do coming out of our office, so. That's sort of my spiel, and I don't know if you have any questions about it that you have, but just once a year, we should come over and kind of talk about what's going on and projects kind of still all over the county, the Avalon Boat Company's adding on from there. We're still working with our new company down in the Ithaca Park Capital Wire and Steel, it's getting prepared to come up here. Making some additions and some changes to the building that they'll need, so. That's a real nice addition back to us.
What is our timeframe on that?
Timeframe, don't have it completely, it's gonna be this year.
Yeah.
But they definitely are coming on board.
Good to see vibrancy at that.
Oh yeah, it really is. You know, George, they've still been kind of back and forth with the numbers on it, but it'll be it won't be the size of what we were there, but it'll be fifty to sixty people before it's done, so it'll it'll continue to grow as they go forward and bring things up here. They're headquartered in DeWitt. And then have a plant in, I think two in Mason, is where they right now work out of, so. Nice, nice opportunity to fill a building that they have there, so.
Are they a competition like El Row or something like that?
No, they really aren't. They just kind of, they're more wire pulling machines that they have, and I've got a C one in place, they said it needs to sit east west. Because of the puller thing. Never seen it, they said your building was facing the right direction, so they liked it. I know, and I laugh too, but it is, there's something about the way magnetic pole is, which you have, that it needs to be facing east west, unless they're just giving me a line, but I don't think they were. Interesting from that standpoint, so.
Any pole?
Yeah, and we tend to get, you know, we really have three major areas left for kind of running out of time, but I'll quick talk quick. Breckenridge, you know, we still have quite a bit of space left over there, and they're expanding the second half of their park. The south part of Ithaca's industrial park, we have some good spaces left there. And then our big one is the Hoffman Road site, that's just the east side of Almore, that kind of shares with Pine River towards St. Louis. And that one continues, it's about a hundred and fifty acres, continues to get a lot of looks. So it's one of the highest sites that get hit as they go through from the M E D C, from the statewide piece of it, so. Just finding the right fit for that one, but continuing to look at it forward. No, it's, I don't know if everyone's rosy, but it's, for the most part, the economy's still pretty good in our county, it really is. C F S continues to enjoy, and you know, good spot there. Enter work a couple of months ago, he's a CEO, and they continue to really think very highly of it, go forward with it, so we've got a nice agriculture plant going forward there. It helps the farmers from all that standpoint on the basis for their soybeans as they go forward a big way, so. Try to balance everything out as we go forward.
A couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay, we have two solar projects going, and they're in Pine River, right?
Actually, there's one in Pine River going, and then there's one that would be split between Washington Township and North Star Township. Those are the two that are going, right?
Washington and what was the other one?
North Star Township and Washington Township off to southeast, and then
Factory is on forty six. You go through Breckenridge, and they have a bunch of solar panels.
No, that's, that's right to their, to their factory. That's not a, that's not a solar
That's why I wondered, can
That's not an industrial solar.
People could say, you know what, I think I'll go solar and keep it for myself. They can do that.
That's their own, that's their own for that stamp that they have. The ones that are the bigger projects, the C one, if you're coming down one twenty seven on the west side of the road now, they're starting to get some panels up. And those will actually be the kind that will move. So they will follow the sun around that they have with them, so that's, that's what a more of an industrial seismic looks, and there's several fields of those, yeah.
So how many acres is Pine River putting in?
Pine River, I believe, was somewhere around five hundred and fifty acres.
Okay, and then Washington and North Star?
About eight hundred.
Wow, that's gonna be big. Okay, I went down to Owasso and saw one. It was eight hundred one, I was shocked how far it went. I mean, this big.
Yeah, it's pretty good size, so.
What's there now?
Pardon me?
What's there now? Where the solar panels are gonna be?
Oh, what, what's it's farmland.
It's all solar plants right now, there's, neither one of these locations got farmland left there. They're putting them up quickly north of, or just west of the highway, and the ones you see the grant road is, it's all there. It's all fully installed.
Well, it's not.
I don't know if it's it's fully installed. You can't miss it.
Before, I mean, it was farmland, now there's gonna be solar panels, so.
Yeah.
What you mean?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And, and the real reason, just to give you a little explanation, where they're developing these sites are right by the substations. Okay, and that's where you get your real bang for your buck, because you don't have to run it for cable, and the cable's very, very expensive to have from that. But if it, if it matters to you a little bit, in the study of agriculture numbers that we had between two thousand seventeen and two thousand and twenty two, we gained about three, about nine thousand acres of farmland in the county, cleared woods and those. And right now, our calculation is if everything worked out, and I know it's not gonna happen, we might get a couple thousand acres of solar. That would be it.
Now, can people, I, when you go to Germany, they put them in their rooftops of their homes. Do you see that happening here?
Someday, it may be to that point, it's, there's a lot of utility things that have to happen, and buybacks and some of the other pieces of it. And you have to make a decision about the, you know, the structure of your house from the standpoint, does it fit, and all those type of things. Most of what we're seeing in solars for personal lives is usually land around it.
I know when you go to Germany, it's original homes that have been there for generation after generation.
Right.
Generation.
That, that would be individual choices.
I just wondered about that. Okay, that's the only thing I had to ask, I think.
Be quicker next time.
We got it.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
More? Consideration of the consent calendar.
The consent calendar.
Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to prove the minutes and receive the communications. All those in favor, say aye. Administrators report.
Quick update on personnel, we've got three open positions right now. First is the Buildings and Ground Project Supervisor. We'll be interviewing our fourth and final person for that position tomorrow morning, so. I expect by the next meeting that we will hopefully have a candidate that will be working with us here, Buildings and Ground. There's an open dispatch position, there's twelve interviews scheduled for that. Just today, the Animal Control Officer position. We were notified that that will be vacant in a couple of weeks, so we posted for that also, so.
Which position out there?
The Animal Control.
Okay.
Yeah, not the shelter.
Okay.
So. We've had a lot of interest in that in a short period of time. Update on projects. I'm going to put out a request for quotes for the company to bring in, come in and get, offer financial support for our financial services office. In accordance with what Yo and Yo brought to us with our audit. I expect to be able to bring back those quotes to you at the next meeting. My intention for that is to request what it would cost us for a company to come in per hour to do projects up to forty thousand dollars a year. Now, that can be negotiable, but that's what I'm gonna put in. That's what I'm gonna request from these companies. Currently, Sheila and I are working on drafting policies for the airport vehicle and for our assigned vehicles here at the county. They are currently at our legal firm being reviewed because there are portions in this policy where it would require us to look up people's drivers' records to make sure that they have clean driving history. And it would require, under certain circumstances, drug and alcohol testing, for example, if they got into an accident. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't imposing on any of the employees' rights by including this, and I was worried correctly. Expect to have that to you next week also. We've contracted with an Alma College student to shoot a promotional video for our parks and recreation. That will be shot with a drone professionally edited, we're looking at one to two minutes worth of content. There seem to be a lot of residents that are unaware of what our parks offer to them. And that really surprised me, because I'm one of the people that's out there ten, twelve times a year. And it came up a lot of times, there's a common theme from our residents in the survey for the master plan. That they wanted more green space activities in parks, so. We're hoping that this promotional video, while would give the residents, show the residents that a lot of what they might want is available to them.
Can I ask you a few questions on that?
Yeah.
Okay, this, I think one of the problems too is that we have a lot of farmers in our, in our county. And during the summer months, when it's the time that you would use the parks, they're busy on a tractor, getting their fields in, and either they're putting them in, or they're fertilizing them, or they're pulling them back out. So is there a type thing, like can people go out there like at eleven o'clock at night and enjoy the water and just the evening? Or is it shut down at a certain time, either or?
Well, they kind of camp. There's a lot of places that they can camp, so when they camp there, they stay overnight, but they the gates used to close at nine, but I'm not certain if they do anymore. I would have to ask.
I think that's because it stays lighter longer.
Where the people are camping out, I don't believe they close up there, so the people could have an egress if they needed to get out there for some reason.
Well, you're a farmer, and so like you're done what time at night farming?
Well, it all depends on the season and what time of the year. Right now, sometimes it never ends, you know what I mean? People are busy right around the clock, but in a harvest time that way, but you know, a lot of the you know, it depends on what type of farming you're doing, if you're ended up getting into the guys that are raising hay or livestock, I mean, they're whenever it's ready to go, it's ready to go, and they, they run hard when it's time to go, so they're out there from dawn to dusk, or you know, sometimes later, so.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen them all. I know that on this side of the county we have a lot of farmers, and that's what they do, they're busy working on it. It'd be nice to figure out, and I think that's why they don't go. And you're not gonna send your kids out there by themselves, or let somebody else take them out there. If there's, I mean, they want supervision on their own children. So, because I've, I've talked to several in my area about using the parks, and they go, I've never been there. And because at summertime, it's closed by the time they can use it. So I didn't know if it stayed open. You know, maybe midnight or something like that, I don't know, so.
Well, the issue with that would be, we would have to staff it, because we would need to clean up after they left, we would need to clean the bathrooms, we would make sure that they don't dump trash, things like that, so.
Yeah.
If there's any farmers that have any concerns, you know, feel free to get ahold of me.
Yeah. But they don't really have any concerns, I'm just asking to promote it. More about I, you know, I, when I'm going to church early in the morning, or coming home late at night from something, I see farmers out there palling, and I'm thinking, you know, like, it'd be nice to get off your tractor and go jump in the lake. But it's on the other side of the county too.
Well, maybe Steve can bring that to the advisory committee.
There you go. Think of something, I do know that the Breckenridge has got the water park going, and that is very busy, people there, and they can go there late at night. Just to walk through the water, so anyway, just thought I'd ask. I'm trying to promote.
Mm-hmm. Next week, our parking lots are scheduled to be resealed and the spaces painted. Tony has worked a schedule out with each of the individual buildings and the people that are using them to affect parking as least as possible, naturally Sheriff's Farming is twenty four seven, so that will be difficult to accommodate perfectly, but fortunately, they're used to us having to move them around when, when we have projects, and so thank you for working us with that, Sheriff. Friday, the RFPs for the new telephone hardware and services and the managed IT services are due. So there's a very good chance that at our next meeting, these will be coming to you also. And Spicer is going to review our solar policy. I have spoke with them. So they're gonna work on that this summer, they asked when we would want that done, and I told them we would definitely want that done before the state legislature came back in session, and after the, so that we would have a up-to-date solar ordinance before they may try to make any changes. We're looking, what we're gonna focus on is ensure that it's comparable to our neighbors, so when we have that case where we have a a solar farm that is split between North Star and Washington, that the ordinance will be comparable, so that the product in both townships looks the same, and is built the same. Add regulations for underground battery storage, ensure that it is treating the businesses and the farmers that are adding solar to their workplace fairly. Those were the three things that I was hoping that they would focus on. Upcoming events for the county or events that have happened, last week, we held a meeting to discuss blight materials management with the township, cities and villages. We did this at the R E S D, we had a very good turnout. The discussion was very interactive, lots of questions and suggestions, all of it was well received. And I believe we at the county here got just as much out of that conversation as, as the townships and the villages did too.
What was that?
So, if you remember a couple of weeks ago, brought to you an updated blight ordinance?
Blight?
Yes. So I went over that with the townships, explained to them the differences, Deandra was there. So she gave an hour, hour and a half long presentation on the blight ordinance, similar to what we did for you. So. This past weekend, several of you, myself and my staff, staff, attended the Breckenridge May Day event. I'll let you guys talk about that, because I'm sure that you will, but I just wanna say that I was extremely impressed with that project, that part.
Wasn't it nice?
It was wonderful, I sat there for an hour, just people watching, because it was just a fun place to be. Apparently Sheila is at the MAC Administrator's Conference this week. I expect that this is gonna probably be the last conference that I'm not going to be able to go to from here on out, I feel like I have a good control on my position now, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to free up time and start attending all of these conferences myself going forward. But at the same time, I thank Sheila for being able to go and get that information for me, because it is necessary. This Friday, we have a potluck at noon. It is sponsored by the Employee Engagement Party, so if any of you would like to attend a potluck, it's Friday.
What time?
At noon. Yep.
What do you usually have, thirty, forty people? For that?
For the potluck? Oh, man, I'd say, I'd say we probably have fifty people, the fifty to sixty that come in and leave throughout the entire hour, hour and a half.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, thirty at a time, usually, half come early, half come late, you know, so that we can continue operations in our departments. That concludes my report.
George, do you wanna start off with the monthly reports?
Yeah. I also attended the Breckenridge Ribbon Cutting over there for their little park, and they've done very good, very good with their ARPA money. It was enjoyed by many people. I think one of the highlights of that is that in the middle of town now, they have three restrooms, individual restrooms that people can go to, they'll be open during the day. So when you have people walking around town, they won't have to bother the businesses or anything, they'll just be able to go at their leisure. I thought that was very nice. They also put a kitchen in that building that is Health Department approved. In other words, people can come there and they can prepare their food, and it's got the stainless steel sinks and the tables and everything in there, it's really nice. And so they've done a good job for their community. On the ninth, I attended Gresham Integrated Health Network meeting. It's a monthly meeting. And there's, there's always between the state and the, and the different operations around the state that, that have to do with mental health, there always seems to be the state always wants a better idea, and it always comes up with a better idea, wanting insurance companies to get more involved. And quite frankly, it's because they're greedy. And there's millions of dollars worth of funds that come through from the federal government. And they're hoping to find a little, things fall out for themselves if they can manage it. And I'm here to tell you, that's not a good idea. These, these these areas that we have these mental health systems in, they're all over the state of Michigan, they did a great job. And they, they always have good audits, they have good outcomes with their people, they care for their people, and I'm just afraid that these these so-called politicians that we have down in Lansing are just in it for their own gain. That's my little speech, but I tell you what, every year we run into it, it's just the way they are. On Monday, I attended the Hamilton Township meeting, North Star meeting. Hamilton Township is getting ready to, to start the moving of the soil around and starting to do that type of thing. They just had to finish one thing on their site plan and they were gonna go. So hopefully, that's gonna come along really quick. North Star, they're struggling trying, they, they have about forty thousand dollars of ARPA money that they've got to spend, and they're trying to spend it. And one of the things they tried to do, and I think I've talked about this before, is to rehab some old buildings in town, tear them down or whatever, and they're just having a terrible time with the property owners, letting them do that. That's just, it's a shame, but that's North Star, I guess. They're trying, and we have a lot of blight in North Star, and this new blight ordinance will help cleaning a lot of that up, because it's got a lot more teeth into it, and I think I'm really happy to see that. On Tuesday, I went to Lafayette Township and Wheeler Township. And Lafayette Township, they've been been mainly talking about their cemeteries, and, and they're really happy with the person that they got this year to work on their cemetery, and everything's going well there. That seemed to be a common thread throughout the the county that I know of, cemeteries are are a burden on the county, a burden on the cities, and they're perpetual. And it used to be, when I was a young man, we had a sextant in town, and they took care of the cemetery, and they had pride in their work, and they took care of everything, and everything, everybody was happy. But when they started to retire, and it got so expensive, we had to hire companies to come in from outside to mow the lawn and clean it up. And all they're there for, and rightly so, is they're there to make a buck. And they're gonna go as fast and as efficient as they can. In order to do that, they've gotta take everything that you put on your loved one's gravesite, flowers or anything else, and they can't put them there anymore. All right, so. It's a sign of the times, it's kinda sad. When I go down to the cemetery and look around, it's kinda bleak. I don't like it, so that's another thing I'm complaining about tonight. And Wheeler Township, they're doing a really good job. Jerry Rhodey is retiring, he's not gonna be the supervisor anymore. Neil Jenkins is running in, in, in his stead, so. It shouldn't, it should be fine over there. On the fifteenth, we had an airport meeting. Discussed many items, and that'll come in the next meeting, we'll have, when we, when we have our next meeting, we'll discuss all that. One of the things we did do is that I know all the commissioners wanted to, or still want to go out and visit the airport. But to do that, it's, we gotta have the timing right. So we offered an airport tour to the advisory committee. And there was four or five members of the advisory committee, including Jim Wheeler, John Lapine. Did you, you walked around too, didn't you? Yeah, yeah, you walked around. So there was a few of us that walked around, I've been there several times, so, it just whatever. So. But we're gonna get around, and we're gonna have it so that the commissioners can come out, we're trying to find a common time. And Chris will work to see what he can do with Dennis, and see what we can about getting the rest of you out there sometime.
More schools out, I think.
Yeah, if your school's out and you got some time, and, and Steve's got his plant done, and, you know. He's not going to Washington DC or anything like that, so.
School ends next week, well, actually Tuesday of June, I think it's the second, second or fourth. But anyway, that'll be, I'll be done with Holden this week. It'll be great, it'll be fun to go out there.
Hey. And like I say, I went to the, I went on Saturday, went over to the ribbon cutting, and then I come back to Ithaca, and they had Rock the Block going on, and I went and visited there, and on Sunday, they had a car show. I think there's more cars there than I've ever seen.
Cars.
Lot of cars, lot of nice cars, lot of wrecked cars. From everywhere, from a jalopy to to quit some amazing automobiles. That was kinda fun. So that's, that's all I got.
Tim, how about you?
Uh, yesterday, I went to the Northern Michigan Counties Association, uh, with Steve. He he gave me a ride and very appreciative. He gave a ride to, uh, Jerry, uh, Isabella, uh, County Commissioner and we listened to Jerry and we try to do just about the opposite of what Isabella County's doing. Um, so, uh, this John Emmerhein, he's uh, runs it. It's a lot of counties, but it's very sparsely attended. Uh, there were people on Zoom. Uh, and he, this John Emmerhein, he keeps talking about he's gonna retire, but, and they're gonna pick someone to take his place, but I, I think he'll probably be there for. Uh, there's a MAC conference last month. So that's why we didn't meet. And, uh, via Zoom, Samantha was giving, uh, uh, the lowdown on this MAC conference. Uh, one, one of the kind of disturbing things, uh, there's a, a petition to go on the ballot in November to regain local, uh, choice, local control. It needs three hundred and fifty thousand signatures. She said, uh, that won't cut it. Uh, probably need up to five hundred thousand, half a million. Because I guess some people in Lansing go through the whole thing and throw out signatures, so. Uh, it, it disturbs me because I, I, it's, it's, it's a evil flaw. I think through government of, of control. They, they want control. That's, that's a reoccurring theme. Uh, there's a general labor shortage. Everybody knows they, she talked about, uh, assistant prosecutors, there's a shortage of them, so they're trying to raise money to, to solve that problem. And then the speaker was John Ingerheim of Johnson Controls. He, uh, he didn't have a microphone and he talked real fast, but I, wha- what I got out of it is, uh, he, he helps the local government, uh, provide services better, uh, maybe, uh, can find money for one thing from another or cut corners or government expenses and try to, uh, help, you know, employment and uh, increase safety and, uh, even talked about reducing emissions. I guess that would be a green energy or something. Uh, and then after he talked, uh, a reoccurring theme is, uh, inspecting septic, uh, tanks every five years. And, uh, the, uh, general consensus was that's very impractical to do maybe every fifteen, twenty years. And, well, the people that come up with this, they don't have septic tanks. So I, again, it's probably, they want to control and stuff. Well, anyway, so that's what I did.
And?
Um, yeah. I went to also May Day in Breckenridge. It was lots of fun. And I had a meeting with MMR, which you do have a copy of that. And also Bethany Township. That's it. I'm done. Your turn.
Um, I went to yesterday with Tim and Jerry. We drove up to Ross Common County. That's we haven't had any fun field trips, Dave. You're not missing anything yet. Um, um, Tim hit most of it, a couple of things, um. There's some, uh, House and Senate bills right now on revenue sharing. Kind of some, they're big swing right now. The House bill has eleven point nine million. And the Senate bill has fifty-two and a half million, so they're a long ways apart, which is not uncommon. So we will see where we end up settling somewhere in the middle, I'm sure on that, but, um, that's something that we will tend to stay tuned, um, because it does affect counties and how much money we will get. Um, they talked a little bit about the gas tax. And the miles, uh, they're gonna do a, a test study. They're gonna have a group of people who are going to uh, keep track of their mileage and pay by the mile versus, and they're gonna get reimbursed for any gas they buy. Uh, just to see how that shapes out, because they really need to have real numbers and this is the way they can do that by having, uh, some people um, keep track of every mile they drive and pay a tax on that. And because of all the electric vehicles that we're missing out on, uh, road tax, that's why they're gonna do this to kind of get a feel for, it will work or won't. Um, so that'll be interesting. Um, it was, they talked a bit, a bit actually about the whole septic system thing because it's, I mean, there's thirty-four counties in the Northern Michigan Counties Association. Eighteen of them were not a, like you said, I think six were on Zoom, so there's only like twelve of us. It was the smallest one we've ever went to. Um, so there was, it's a big deal, the, most of your northern counties, because most everybody has septic system. Uh, George and I have heard about it every month at the health department meeting. There is no physical way. The health department's in there, we can't afford to uh, hire enough people to inspect. How many did they say there was just in the three counties of Gresham, Mycom and Clinton?
Well, the total number of septic tanks?
Yeah, it was.
It was in the thousands.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy. In order for them to do that, they'd have to hire like fifty thousand, I think. Yeah, they'd have to hire like fifteen more people with no idea where that money is coming from to try to do this inspection thing. If, th- this definitely is not done talking about it, but when, uh, Jerry was in here the other day, they're really not discussing it a lot because, yeah, there's a reason it's on hold because nobody wants people to not vote for him in November. So I think we'll come up with something more, um, common sense approach. Maybe it'll be a ten or a fifteen or twenty year inspection process or a point of sale or something like that. That's how they'll deal with that.
The end of it, I don't think there'll be a state law.
Yeah.
It'll be all regional laws and local health.
Last week with the parks and rec, um, they have a new lawnmower. They said, thank you because it's working out well. It was exact same placement for what they had, so there was like zero learning curve. They like it. They really are doing well. Um, super excited about this promotional video because I think you're right. I think a lot of people do not realize what all our Gresham County parks have to offer and, um, I, I think it'll be a really neat video when they get done with, I mean, so people can actually see just how big these parks are, what all these parks have to offer with the fishing and the kayak, swimming and the uh, baseball and the golf and the camping and all of the things that they have to offer. I think it's gonna be a really neat video. Um, super cool that they're working with, uh, Alma College on this. Um, a lot of excitement about that, um. You know, the, the county, um, give out a hundred thousand dollars or will be giving out a hundred thousand dollars of that tax revenue to local entities for, uh, park improvements. Um, they're gonna try and come up with some sort of a sign to go to these parks, a small, nothing huge, but something that you put in a prominent place where people can see, so that people know their tax dollars are actually being used. Because you're right, John, there's people in Breckenridge who may never go to Reed Park. But with them using this cost share or using these tax dollars to go to all these other local entities, that's what your tax dollars are paying for. Not just these two main parks plus, you know, Luniac and, and Pompeii and, uh, the trail thing. These are your dollars, your tax dollars being used in some there. Ashland, Breckenridge, you know, and I think it's a good thing for us to, um, have this sign out there. So it's just gonna have a, a quick little statement on it so people realize that their tax money is being used in these other locations. I think that'll be a really good thing.
Just real quick on that, for the first time this last weekend too, we had our first food truck out at Reed's Park, for a baseball tournament.
Yep.
Which if anybody has ever brought their children out there for a baseball tournament, it is
Yeah.
difficult finding time to get.
Run somewhere to get something to eat. Exactly. So that's another thing they're actually looking at is trying to do come up with a system to bring food trucks out and, because there's times you go to Reed's or, uh, up share on the weekend, super busy. You go during the week, maybe not so busy. So trying to come up with some ideas, John's working with the staff and that's one of the ideas they have is to do a food truck night. Not sure if we're gonna do it weekly, monthly, biweekly, how they wanna do it, but, um, there seems to be a lot of interest in doing it and I think it will be a really good thing for them. Um, obviously it will probably reduce somewhat what we sell, but our our concessions out there primarily sell pop water and candy bars. That's the primary thing they sell. So bringing some real food options out there, I think will open the door for some some more people to wanna be out there and I think it will be a really good thing for the park. Um, then there's the concern of how much trash will that generate and stuff like that. So it'll be a little bit more work, but um, things that they're willing to work through, so that'll be a nice thing.
We want to make sure it's equal opportunity for the vendors also.
Yeah, absolutely. And, yeah, you can't just say, yeah, exactly. Can't have our favorite food truck. You gotta open it up to everybody. Um, depending on what Tim said, and I'm gonna get done talking faster than George tonight, so I can tell him I was done quicker. Um, when, uh, John Ingerham was, uh, or Ingerham was talking to us, one of the things that kind of caught my attention was, um, with the talk, you know, Jim talked about solar and private companies having solar. If you've been down to Michigan State University, you've seen all the covered parking that they have solar. Now that we've just removed all these trees from our parking area right here, it actually helps preserve the length of time for your seal coat and all that sort of stuff. Might be something for Gresham County to think about doing. That's space we're already using. It's not gonna take new um, space. We're not gonna really detract from the views of courthouse or the jail in doing that, but I'm quite sure that anyone who drives here, judge, sheriff, I know that patrolmen would love to walk out to their patrol car in the wintertime and not have to dig them out of the snow. Um, might be something for us to think about. There's a lot of grant money available to do things like that, so I don't know whether it would be much cost to the county to do it. But it would be a, I think, a good faith effort for us as well to show that we are trying to do something. I mean, you don't want to do anything to detract from this beautiful building. And I certainly don't want to see solar panels hanging off the side of it, but covered parking area might not be a bad place to have so. Um, another thing that I thought was interesting is a lot of government buildings are looking at going geothermal. Simply because, um, a lot of these older buildings are very difficult to heat and keep them cool. And the geothermal, I, I know the state capital did it several years ago. I think they drilled fifty wells around the outside of that thing. And, uh, has dramatically reduced what it costs to heat cool the state of Michigan's capital. So just, you know, I thought that was interesting that they talked about that, so. George, I got none before you.
I have one question about the parks. When somebody comes from out of, out of the county, do they pay to get in? Is it free to everybody?
County residents are charged. That is only on the weekends. That's for, it's not to generate revenue, it's for out control.
Yep.
So that our residents who paid for the parks have room to enjoy it.
Okay, I just wondered.
I, I went to the mobile medical response with you. I didn't. Let's see.
That's nice.
We met the guy, like, mon- uh, special meeting on Monday. I was really impressed with the building. Uh, that's for the nine-one-one calls.
That was E O C where we were at. Nine-one-one is at the other end and we were in E O C.
We're in the same building.
Yeah, same building, uh-huh.
I was, I was impressed.
Glad that you made it there. Glad that you made it.
Well, I was at a lot of the events that people have mentioned here. Uh, also I attended the ribbon cutting for the new surgical center at Alma Hospital. I thought I was far enough back in the crowd that I didn't get my picture taken, but some poor little old lady's gonna have to see my ugly mug in the morning sun.
Oh, what was your front page today?
Is he?
Didn't look like I was paying attention either. Oh, well. And I, I really enjoyed the airport tour. For most of the time I've lived here, I didn't even know we had an air. It was kind of fun to go around and, and see what all is there. That said, I bet I got done before Tim and Steve, so. Okay.
And while we were at the meeting, two planes landed just to purchase fuel from us.
Yeah, while we're sitting to have in our meeting, of course, Fuel Farm has been one of our big projects.
Hmm.
And it was really cool. We're having our meeting in the terminal and a plane, one plane comes in, fuels himself up, nobody there. And then this guy flies out and then another one, one guy was from Lake Owasso and the other guy was from Grand Rapids. They're coming here now to get fuel because we are less expensive than anyone else in the area.
And I would assume that now with this new credit card system, and they don't have to carry cash or?
No, that's perfect. Yeah, they just, yeah, it's cool.
Yeah.
A lot handier than they have to have the fuel truck come to.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
A nephew flies up here from Owasso. It wasn't, you probably don't know who flew in here.
Okay, new business. Keegan contract.
All right, so what I've got before the board is a contract with Bengal Assessing Services, which is owned by Keegan Bengal, our equalization director. Uh, Bengal Assessing Services, they have, um, multiple clients that they do assessing for outside of Gresham County. Uh, as when we, uh, eliminated a part-time position earlier this year, that did leave a void in what that person did and what that person's primary function, what the position's primary function was, was recording deeds. Um, Keegan has offered to have his business do pick up this at seven dollars a deed with a maximum annual compensation of fifteen thousand dollars. The term of the contract would be from, I believe, the first of June through the end of next fiscal year. So in the contract, this broke out for this year, a maximum of six thousand dollars to be compensated, but you would report all of them at seven dollars a pop. Next fiscal year would be fifteen thousand dollars maximum at seven dollars a pop. So if you didn't get up to that,
We wouldn't.
We wouldn't. He's, he, it's not for fifteen thousand dollars, it's just a max of fifteen. Um, so the, the part-time position, uh, was budgeted this year for twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. So we are recognizing an overall cost savings for this and this is one step closer for us in privatizing the Equalization Director Services. Um, we are what's the only thing that is keeping us from doing that now is Keegan needs to build up his clientele to where he can, uh, easily afford healthcare for his family. That's when the idea, the one, when the switch will be made and we would put it out for an RFQ, which we would expect uh, Bengal Assessing Services to apply for, along with others in the area. So I am.
What time, how much time do you think this is gonna take?
Well, this takes a it depends on the deed. Some deeds are extremely difficult. Um, from talking with Keegan, they take anywhere from fifteen minutes to an hour to enter a specific deed. And that's how he came up with an average, um, of about seven dollars a deed. He was looking for, uh, this physician to be compensated approximately twenty dollars an hour. I know that we have several, uh, offices that work with deeds. I think the treasurer's office contracts with people to search deeds. Um, seven dollars an hour is a, or seven dollars a deed is a very low amount compared to the businesses that we deal with and, and other departments.
So this, this service though will be just entering the deeds, right? It won't be every time Terry needs a deed searched, it won't be going to Keegan to do it. We'll still be able to search them. His company will simply be entering all of
It won't be going to Keegan to do it. We'll still be able to search them. His company will simply be entering all of these deeds. So that they are in a searchable format for us, correct?
Keegan, would you be able to answer that up here, please?
Uh, so yeah, so this would be um, our assessing database that the online G I S uses. Um, that we also use to record sales and use uh, to analyze the market. That is what we would be using these uh, deeds for. Basically, we'd be taking the deeds recorded at the register of deeds office and we'd be entering them into our county database.
But if somebody needs to search them, we can still search them through our database.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we won't have to have you do that. You're entering them, simply entering them into the system. That's uh, once I read it and I was like, I was a little confused when you were talking about searching them. I was like, hmm, I don't think we have to pay you seven dollars every time we search one.
No, yep. Uh, what we would do has nothing to do with the register of deeds sit uh, database. Basically, we're taking those documents, entering them into the county database. We can use them to then get put out into the online G I S and then so citizens can search them as well.
So clarification on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any other uh?
Just kind of hearing about this, that you're gonna work from, you've been working from home. And that you're working with us and then also other areas, is that right? And so until you build that up. Um, you're gonna still be, are you full-time here or?
Yep, I'm full-time here. Yep, everything that I do with the side business is completely separate and I'm on time.
Do you come to work here at all or are you strictly at your home?
Uh, majority at home, but we do come into the office uh, for a half day a week and we also do uh, field work. So we're still out about the county. Uh, looking at sales, looking at different uh.
You still be doing that here too or?
Absolutely, yep.
Hey, looking for a motion to approve the contract between Grashit and Bengal Assessing Services.
I saw a move that we approved the um, contract with the Grashit County, between Grashit County and Bengal Assessing Services.
Is that your new business?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
I wanna make sure.
Moved by Steve, supported by George, to approve the contract between Grashit and Bengal Assessing Services. All those in favor, say aye. Was nay? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on your business.
League tonight or something?
Man, gonna talk to us.
Good evening, honorable board, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time. And this, uh, I try and be brief. I won't promise to be uh. Quicker than Steve or George depending on questions. My name's Rob, Bob Brown. I'm the executive director and. I have the privilege of running your area agency on aging for you, region seven. Uh, I also thank you for the appointment of Cory Nestle to my board. Lot of good input and feedback and knowledge and experience that she brings to the board, which is greatly appreciated.
Amazing for somebody so young, isn't it?
He's my boss, so I'll just.
Just leave it.
So uh, anyways. George, I got a follow-up on you and something you referred to. And that's the insurance companies coming into the state of Michigan, uh, to be community-based organizations to replace us. I'm one of those. Our agency is owned by ten counties. It's governed by ten counties. Many, many, many years ago. Getting close to fifty years, five decades of. That ownership and that partnership between ten counties. Which, you know, came from the rough building days and everybody trying to figure it out to this cohesive group. That you now have that is a well-oiled machine on behalf of ten counties. You're my governing board. You appoint my board. I don't get a say in it. I work with whoever you send. Thank you for Cory. They're coming in and wanting to do those jobs, behavioral health, taking care of our seniors, taking care of our veterans. There's a project that they're expanding on right now that'll come into effect in twenty twenty-six on a pilot. And then be expanded statewide out of twenty twenty-nine. We do not know where long-term support services will be. That's the community-based services in the home for our citizens. Um, I was downstate at another area agency on aging prior to coming here. Where they had allowed the insurance companies to come in. And it was amazing how the insurance companies would say, we did a great job. We're doing good. But when you ask them for the data, they don't have. On the other hand, I have to produce the data that shows the good outcomes, that shows the healthy outcomes. I gotta report on a hundred and eighty encounter data on each client at every assessment, hundred and eighty. Anyways, with that said, the amazing part is we continue to do it cheap. And we're more efficient. So I do get asked, what's an area agency on aging? Well, we, we're not the Meals on Wheels program. We're not the transportation all the time. We're not a lot of things. It's kind of like that old, how many of you have heard of B A S F, right? We don't make the tapes, we make the sound better. So with that said, we're, we subsidize. We do the technical assistance, we do the oversight, we, we're that glue in between. First off, under the older Americans Act, no county of the ten could be an area agency on aging to themselves. I get asked that all the time. Why can't we just work with the state directly? If you took the three largest counties, Saginaw Bay and Midland, they couldn't do it. By the way, region seven goes all the way from one twenty-seven to Lake Year. Those ten counties. So you can call it mid-Michigan, you can call it Great Lakes area. But uh, three counties wide, all the way to the lake. Ten counties. So we do those service. The other part is, so we work with your council on aging, work with uh. John over there, uh, cook, right? Did I get it right? Thank you. And we subsidize those meals and I'll get to that part. That's the most important part. That's us. Uh, yearly, I come to my governing agencies for two reasons, to report on the programs. Uh, obviously, those are going well. We take care of them. You'll see that in this report, how many clients we take care of. Or we partner with your council on aging to take care. You'll also see the money in that report and the return on your investment. The other part of this is, I want to tell you, so uh, somebody was talking about their audits, so since seventeen, since I've been the executive director, we've had. What they call an unmodified opinion. But even more importantly, we have, we have not received. But we have not received a management letter either. No recommendations, no sightings, no nothing. So they can say the unmodified is the best opinion. I'm an old financial guy. If you don't have a management butter, that's even better than the unmodified. So it gives you a plus up. So to this report, I just want to say. Twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred dollars you, you supply to us. And we return one point two million dollars in services to the clients of your county. The other thing is, is yes, you could work directly with the state. Be careful what you ask for. Our uh, admin runs about between five and six percent. The state could charge up to fifteen percent. Uh, usually uh, insurance companies, if they're running it, they get to keep twenty percent. So um, we're owned by you, we're governed by you, we're efficient by you. And when you look at this area, I came from southeast Michigan. I moved up here, I retired. I actually live in Gladwin County now. Uh, built a house and uh. I love it up here. The difference in the people is amazing. The difference in the people we serve is amazing. Um, even though these are called entitlement programs, most of our clients here. Don't feel entitled. They're still appreciative of the services that you're supplying and my agency supplying. I could talk forever.
Please don't.
Mister Chair. But I do have to say, there isn't a better return grant program out there that I. And the, and the numbers are there. The other part is, if we took that money away. Uh, and mostly through your council on aging, you would lose over three hundred thousand dollars of direct payments from us to them. They do the services. So heck of a bargain. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Snap, thanks, Bob.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for all you do.
And thank you for the gift too. You need a motion?
Those were purchased before me. No, but if you haven't acted on the local match. Would appreciate that being approved at some point. Well, thank you.
We'd actually have to pull it out.
Material management plan, are you handling that?
So uh, Sheila put together a memo. Uh, we're looking for a motion to appoint her as a designated planning agent for materials management. Currently, we have the designated planning agent is the drain commissioner. And we don't know how that started, why that person was originally the D P A. Um, but I can tell you that Bernie is not interested in continuing that. Has been wondering why he's been getting all these emails lately with the materials management, uh, up down Lansing, so. Um, we'd be looking for a motion to.
I would like to know, when is those meetings?
I think they're once a month on Fridays. I don't know exactly when. But they're up in Isabella County.
Yeah, I think what I'd like to see is a county commissioner on those boards.
But the boards haven't been created yet. That's why there isn't a county commissioner. We're just, we're still in negotiations. So there, there is a requirement, there will be a requirement that an elected official from within our county. Uh, would partake in that. Doesn't necessarily have to be a county elected official. Um, it could be a township or city, but that will be, we will have an elected official seat available. So in this board would decide who that would.
This one, when they were talking about it two months ago and we had a couple of different meetings where we had representatives from Granger. Along with uh, Jake from Isabella County here answering questions and stuff. It's like a fifteen or sixteen person board, correct? And each county that's involved in it has a seat there. But then there's a spot for commissioners and there's also. Like cities and villages have a, somebody can be assigned to them. From like a large city or a township and then. For a trucking company or a transport service company, which is what Granger had requested that they wanted a seat at the table. And I remember all the discussion because I asked a lot of questions about it and. The, you know, Granger being, you know, the reason I felt so kind of, um, I guess. That we need to include Granger. Granger is the only waste management service company that owns and operates a site within our county. We have a few that operate here. They're the only one that has a commercial site, the one in Elma, that they operate here. And that's why I was, you know, when I'd ask all those questions is that I really think, but. On that board, if it's, ends up being seven or eight counties, that board isn't gonna have seven or eight different. Transport companies that are there, it's gonna be the board, that board will have to decide which one they want to.
And one of the open slots on that board is a representative from a local business, which is also Granger. So that's how we could slide them into there to have multiple representation from materials management.
I know there's some places people are concerned about this and the, you know, like, there's. Townships that have uh, contracts with companies for ten years or. Still have one for two years or whatever, you know, the. This isn't something we're deciding to do. The state is mandated to do this. We have to do this. This is something we have to do. We either have to. By ourselves and do this recycling, which we are in no way, shape or form financially set to do that. Or we join one of these, you know, groups of counties or something to do this. It has nothing to do with, because there's been some questions about, oh, I have a ten-year contract with Granger to transport our trash or pick up our trash. This, this thing, the state is mandating has nothing to do with that. You're still gonna have Granger to pick up your trash. It's just where that trash ends up going.
Actually, where they're recycling.
Where the recycling goes.
Yes.
Trash. There's two different entities. You got trash and you have recycling.
First of all, I don't understand why we're involved in this. This should be between.
Said we have to be.
No, I'm saying it should be between the, the trash people, the um. Granger and the other ones, waste management. They're the ones that should be involved in this.
Well, it's the state government saying we have to have a policy. That's where we have to be involved.
State is mandated, the county makes, so we, the five commissioners, have no choice. The state has said, you have to do this.
We have to come up with aid, recycling.
Why is the state involved in this anyway? I mean, the state has opened it up. I mean, they're worried about where this trash.
Because the state runs the E P A and the E P A is telling us what we have to do. It's from the state of Michigan.
Very, our, our state, and when you look at the percentage of recyclables, we have been low. Our governor and our state legislators have decided, we're gonna be better. And the way they're gonna make us better is they're gonna mandate it. All eighty-three counties have to do this. And in doing so, they've given us a deadline. And if you don't meet those deadlines, then the. I mean, there's what, sixty thousand dollars plus fifty cents a person or something like that on the line. For a set number of years. There's a guarantee for some length of time and then after that. Kind of open-ended whether it will be funded or not. But I mean, there is no real, we have. Our choice is that we have to enter into one of these agreements and that's what. We, if by assigning Sheila to this, she will be our representative to decide, are we going? With Isabella or is that not gonna happen? Are we gonna go a different route, right?
It's the foundation of the, it's a, it's a foundation of the unit of government that we're gonna find, wind up dealing with. And right now, we have no clue, that is. Until we take our representatives like Sheila and they all get in a room and they, they start to talk. Ideas evolve and pretty soon you're, you're, you're gonna have to have a plan start to come together. But that, that hasn't taken place yet.
What I'm saying is, I talked to Bethany Township. Bethany Township.
Bethany Township, yeah.
Okay, and they have a ten-year, or a ten-year contract that just signed it.
Yeah, with waste man.
So they're with, so they're not going to be a part of this for ten years, because they have a contract.
To be a part of this, Jen. They, they don't have a choice. They can have whoever they want to pick up their trash. Trash has to go to the, or these recyclings has to go to.
So they're, they are with another county.
Saginaw County has to be a part of one too.
They're gonna be a part.
So what's it hard enough to do if they're with, well, if they're with waste management, they're with Saginaw. So what you're gonna have to do, the sixty thousand dollars, you're gonna have to split that up between waste management, Saginaw and.
Each group, each entity gets sixty thousand dollars.
That will be the county's funds.
Yeah, but I'm saying that they've already told me, they go, we are already signed a contract, ten years. With waste management, just signed it. So they want their money to go to Saginaw. They're part of their money. In other words, you can't use them. And send their money over to um, our plaza. It is going to Saginaw.
I'm not gonna, that money eventually will come all the way back around the circle. It's what's gonna happen. Because Saginaw has to be in, in this whole thing also. So if it goes to Saginaw, Saginaw's gonna go back to the group. That there's ten counties.
Eight.
Eight counties.
It's a ninth pending.
And one of them is Saginaw.
I didn't know there was a ninth pending. Okay.
I know there was eight or nine coming.
We really don't know where we stand on this. I don't know why we would be void on it, voting, voting on anything anyway. You're, you're asking us to vote on Sheila being a part of it up there. Is that it?
No, no. We just want Sheila to be our representative.
The state would recognize her.
Yeah.
As the.
We're not making, we haven't made a decision. We have until October to make that decision.
So right now.
We just have to have a person that's our representative. Somehow Bernie got to do it. Bernie doesn't know anything about it, didn't want to do it. How he got picked, I have no idea.
He was on the old plan.
Yeah, so I haven't, but this obviously I think was way more than Bernie wanted to be.
Is there a commissioner?
Sheila are.
And also we.
I'll support that.
Commissioner on that.
Can we, can we change it from Sheila to the deputy administrator position instead?
Yeah.
Deputy Administrator represent.
Now I'll support that. Motion by Tim, supported by you.
Yes.
Because there's going to be a commissioner with her. Why not?
We have.
You're getting ahead of us, Jan. That's down the line. Motion by Tim, supported by George to appoint the deputy administrator to the waste management plan. Planning agent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was nay?
Aye. I think that the county commissioner should be on this board. We're the ones that make decisions and we're asking somebody else to go and represent us.
There is more to it though.
I know, but we still need a commissioner on there.
We move on?
I'm, I'd be glad to do it. I'll do it. I'd be, I'd be more than happy to go to these meetings.
That's where we're headed to. That, that's, this group of people will then form the board, which is, once they form the board is where there's openings for commissioners and all these other entities to be involved in.
This is the reason why. Let me talk to you about this. I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget them all. In the last month, it's come to my attention, I mean, I like Isabelle County, I'm up there all the time. But they have some serious things going on in issue. Um, my present county, Isabelle County. And I think that a county commissioner should be on there. Some of the things, I'll go through them real quick. They put out a millage that failed. That millage was to put money in through the general fund. There are six million dollars in a deficit. They have, and the first thing they were going to do is let deputies go because they didn't get this money. They're going to put it on the ballot again. And if it doesn't pass, they're going to let deputies go. Um, they're also, um, they, uh, they tore up their, um, they have a, the old courthouse. They tore up that whole building because they thought there was some asbestos side in there, only to find out there isn't. And now they don't have the money to put that back together. There's just a lot of issues there with Isabelle County. And now we want to take and do our garbage up there. They also want to put in, they want to buy a um, a machine that will sort this, all this, uh, stuff. It's a fifteen million dollar machine. And again, um, are they going to go up on our prices here on our, our garbage? And once we go up there, we're, if, are they going to take? And I, I've already talked to a few people with, um, can't think of the garbage, the garbage that we do business with for, um, St. Louis and Alma and all over the county here.
Granger.
Granger, yeah. Granger. And they've never been asked to sit in on any of this stuff. They've asked to be part of the, the conversation and have yet to be asked to come to any.
They didn't even form the committee yet.
They should be, well, obviously they are because Sheila's been up there a couple of times. They need to be part of right at the beginning, not at the end or in the middle. So anyway, that's, that's my feelings on it. I've talked to my area. They said to vote no on it. So that's what I'm doing.
Can we move on? We've got a lot of meeting to do.
Ashford County Building Security Improvement Plan. Matt?
Good evening. This one's pretty short and sweet. Um, we have two capital improvement projects that are on the budget this year. One is to improve building security here at the courthouse. The other is building security over at the sheriff's office. Um, and one of the things we'd like to do is purchase additional security cameras at each location as well as to over at animal control. Uh, I asked for a quote from EPS Security. There are building security vendor currently. And they came back with the quotes that were included in the packet. With those two, if we approve those two quotes, or sorry, those three quotes, one for animal control, one for the sheriff's office and one for the courthouse. Um, the project will be under budget because the emergency management office has some grant funding available that they would like to use for this project.
The ones, the sheriff's office said cameras and microphones, are those going to go into like jail receiving area where the microphones are or?
There's a few places.
Yeah. Is that specifically, I know I went through all this when Ingham updated all theirs and that's where they wanted the microphone ones was high liability areas. Makes employees, I mean, I remember people were so freaked out that they were going to be recording twenty-four hours a day what they were saying at the sheriff's office. It was like, it took what felt like an act of Congress at the time because I was a lieutenant to be like, no one cares what you talk about daily. We need to know when things are being conspired against you by the inmates or they're going to do something to another inmate or you just to themselves, things that we needed to be able to hear to go with the footage of these video cameras. So that's, that's, I just wanted that to be out in the open of, you know, I don't want employees thinking, oh God, big brothers, not only they're watching me, they're listening to what I'm saying. And that's, and that's why I wanted to bring it up is that we're not trying to sit over where they're going to be eating their dinner and wondering whether they're talking about.
It's for inmate and employee safety.
Yes.
And the exteriors are some places that. Need to have.
They're blind or it's. You get good detail there.
Uh, the explanation that was given to me over animal control was that there were, people were dropping off animals and that they wanted to be able to.
Just drop them off.
Identify who, maybe who was dropping off those animals.
Yep. We'll just throw them right over the fence.
I don't understand it. There's a, the place was locked up and they.
But there's a dog animal outside.
Yeah.
There's a dog run that's outside and they come in and they pitch the animal over the fence and then leave.
Instead, there's a, there's a process to do it right, but they don't do.
They don't do it right. They just.
Who those people are.
Yeah, that's why.
That's why they want.
So we need a motion to select EPS Security as the vendor.
I saw that we adopt the, um, contract with EPS.
Yes.
To add the additional cameras, not only to the courthouse, the sheriff's office, but they have a control. Or.
Motion by Steve, supported by Tim, to select EPS Security as the vendor for the courthouse, sheriff's office and animal control. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Was nay? Motion carried. Banking Resolution. Terry?
In your packets, uh, you have a twenty twenty-three, twenty-four banking resolution number twenty-four dash three twenty-three. This is a resolution to approve the financial institutions that we deposit our investment uh, monies with. They're listed here. This is a, um, a requirement of the investment policy. And I'm asking tonight that this be approved by the board.
I see it's twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Should it be twenty-four and then the?
No, we're talking now. And I will be back again next.
Fiscal year. Okay. All right. It's fiscal year.
Okay.
A motion?
Make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-four dash three two three.
What is it?
It's a banking resolution. It approves the banks that we have our investment monies deposited in.
Minimum changed from where we're.
Didn't change anything, no.
Nothing's been added, right? You do business with all these right now?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's right. This is just kind of a formality. They give us pretty good increase.
Yes. We'll talk about that at the finance meeting.
Motion by George, supported by Steve, to adopt a resolution twenty-four dash three twenty-three. That'd be a roll call.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Angie, would you like this? You got one? Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Terry. Land Bank update.
All right. Well, provided a memo to give an update to this board where we stand with the Gresham County Land Bank Authority. It's been a while since we've talked about it. One of the first things that we needed to do as a board, which, uh, which Terry is the chair of, vice chair of, um, is listen to ideas for what types of projects that we could use that five hundred thousand dollars for that we got from ARPA funds from the state of Michigan when we created the land bank. We settled on, uh, after we heard some pitches, um, we settled on making an offer on one thirty-seven North Mill Street in St. Louis, which you might know as the old bank there. What we are setting out to do is to stabilize that building. Um, structurally repair it so that it's sound, uh, replace the roof uh, and put it into, uh, a condition that would be attractive for someone to come in and, and fix it up, to use it as apartments and storefronts.
Is that a one?
Apartments and storefronts, um, similar to what we've done to other downtown buildings, uh, through the DDA um, in Alma and in Ithaca. Uh, the first thing, uh, as part of the condition of the purchase agreement had to go through an environmental, uh, review. Uh, phase one environmental review is an in-depth study of the history of the site. Um, and it came back with, uh, several potential contaminations, abandoned underground storage tank, um, possible mitigation from other sites. Uh, today we actually had the opportunity to sit down with the company that did this phase one study. And despite, uh, how bad that sounds, he actually gave us some pretty good news, um, that it wasn't as bad as the report showed. And we would need to do a phase two study, which we, uh, is going to be underway here at any moment where they actually go in and do some testing, find out if there's an underground storage tank. It could have been removed. Um, they found some paperwork from a long time ago that said there was a gasoline storage down there. Uh, so.
Is that the heater, heater with or?
They were, there, there was no other information. They don't, they don't even have documentation if it was a gas station at some point. So there was just a schematic that indicated there was a storage tank. But it, it appeared that it would have minimal effect on this project going forward. So we're waiting on the space to. Uh, the, the biggest thing that I, I need to remind this board is that this is a reimbursable grant. And the county is, um, the, the, the funds will run through the county. So the county would have to, um, front the money for this. Not looking for any action from this board, but if you have any questions, uh, Jim and Shelley stayed specifically for this as Greater Gresham has graciously agreed to create this program for us. So.
I'm trying to think of what building that is. It's a house.
It's your own commercial bank, Jan, on the corner. Big restaurant, the dining store.
Back when I first came in to have a pizzeria, there was a guy that bought that, a young guy. And he was going to redo that whole building over and all these years, like at Christmas time, he puts all lights in on the windows. Is he the one that's selling it or did he lose it or? I couldn't believe that. It's been like forty-five, I've been here forty-six years. So it was forty-five years ago, shortly after I bought my pizzeria, he bought that building. I just, I, some of the other day I thought, I wonder what ever happened to him because you, you don't ever see him. You just see things on the window and I saw him on the, yeah, that's it. Yeah. And a storage tank in the basement. I thought, wow. That's been there for years.
I, I want to know, figure out the money mechanism here. Uh, we'll have the five hundred. No problem there. Now, who's going to be the general contractor?
Having determined that.
Okay. So obviously when a general contractor coming in, then are you going to have a plan? An architectural plan, a demolishing plan? What kind of plan are you going to have?
We have to do.
That's a good statement right now.
Um, what, what, what we've basically approved right now is still the environmental assessments. So we haven't purchased it. We have a purchase agreement subject to the environmental, coming back acceptable to us to go forward with that. If it does come back under that, we exercise the balance of this purchase agreement, we purchase it. But then at that point, we're going to end up with having a consultant coming in to help us along with to figure out exactly what we're going to do because it's going to need an architectural plan to do it.
A lot, a lot of things going.
Yeah, this is stabilization. There's really, you can have demolition, stabilization or rehab. Rehab means you're going to have a certificate occupancy at the end of it. This one won't. Um, stabilization means you're stabilizing the property for future use. Right now, the biggest thing that it has is a roof issue that's created some internal issues with the floors and some of those. So they need to be shored up and a new roof put on. So that's really where we will be. So we'll have to get bids to make sure that this work can be done within the scope of this budget.
Okay, so, um.
And signed off.
All right. Who approves those bids and, uh, and, and what expertise are they going to be using to approve those bids?
The expertise will be hiring someone who has the ability to be a construction manager that can understand it to go forward. We're not construction managers as we have from that standpoint. So we will have to hire someone who is a construction manager who will agree with the architect who signs off on the plans to say, yes, this will in fact stabilize the building for you. At that point, then the construction manager will go out, solicit bids to get that work done. And then come back with that. And we have to use the county's bid process in order to do that because it's under the, the preview of the county. At that point, that individual then would make a decision as to who they would recommend to make, to do, do the project. And that's what we would continue to approve.
But you're not going to be having to come back here all the time. Once we, once we say, okay, you've got five hundred thousand, uh, that's basically it.
Yeah, that will then be driven by the Brownfield Authority Board, which is made up of Terry's the chair. Chris is the vice chair of it. And then we have the city managers of Alma, Ithaca and St. Louis are the other board members of it. So they will make the decision for it. Greater Gresham serves as basically the one that facilitates for, on behalf of the county for it, but we're not on the board of it.
Well, you're going to be more like the fiduciary to handle the, the, the five hundred thousand of this project gets done, you, that you pay for that or whatever.
Well, no, the fiduciary will be the county. So the dollars will be run through the county.
They're going to get the bills.
Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly. The bills will be coming through us to the county.
So after you okay the bills.
After we okay.
I want some, I want somebody in charge here.
Exactly.
No, 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 you both.
It'll be us from that standpoint.
That's what I'm saying. Somebody's going to be in charge, make sure everything's.
Yes, we're going to come through that to make sure that it's done properly and that we have.
I don't think we've ever done one of these. I'd call.
Is that, are we, are we just responsible for the five hundred thousand? What happens after that?
Well, that's what we're talking.
That's it. There isn't after that. At that point, what we do, Jan, is this building would be stabilized and at that point owned by the land bank. And with that point, if that would be then to attempt to market it, to find somebody to be the long-term investor that would develop it.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
Right. Got you.
How many square foot is the building total?
Fifteen thousand eight hundred.
Fifteen thousand eight hundred?
It's a big old building.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. So basically you're thinking the whole lower level preferably would end up when, you know, storefronts, restaurants, something of that nature, and then living quarters in the two above it, correct?
That is, in a personal world, that would be exactly what we'd like.
The money that we're spending up to five hundred, it doesn't have to be five hundred, but up to, I would imagine.
Yeah.
But it'll take that much.
Then, then we would market it.
Correct.
And attempt to sell it.
So now the money that's garnered off that, where does that go?
The funds come back through to the county that then will be repaid back to the state for the ARPA funds. the county that then will be repaid back to the state for the ARPA funds.
So when, when does the county get to be made whole again?
County gets made whole at the end of the project, where we said, okay, it's now been stabilized on it. They go through and approve that, and the payments are made back to the county.
Okay.
Make them whole.
So after that's done, we don't have to wait for the sale, we don't have to wait, once the stabilization is done, then we're done?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
Owned then by the land bank, and attempted to be marketed to somebody. But, I mean, the revitalization, depending on the degree of it, will be significantly more than 500,000.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I'll make a motion that we allow to us to work with Greater Grashit and the land bank and provide the 500,000.
By George, supported by Jan, to how do we say that?
To fund the land bank project.
To fund the land grant project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, motion carried.
I just have one question for Tim. Do you, did you ever meet the original owner of that, or whatever happened to him?
The owner of it. Now, I understand he's an elderly gentleman. Whether he's owned it four years, Jan, I really have.
He was a young guy. I think he was younger than I was.
This guy that owns it now is not younger than you.
Isn't, yeah, a young guy was, I mean, he was constantly working in there. I think he had another job and he was using, we thought he used our own money, and we do it over.
David Duba is the owner.
He who?
Duba. D U B A?
D U B A. I, I had somebody from Kirinell School ask me who owned the Zottown, Dave Duba. D U B A. Okay, thanks. But he sold it.
Hey, looking for motion to leave the board meeting and go into the fold. Moved by George, supported by to enter the finance meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. George? Okay, thank you, everyone, for sending the money on your own. That was just a joke.
Okay, the first thing we got is our May financial.
We haven't had any more drain prepayments. Like, they're, they're focused, they're focusing on MDOT projects right now, so we are having to take loans out. MDOT's paying for a lot of the drains that are going into the ground right now. ARPA funds, Ithaca just closed out their ARPA fund project, Breckenridge's closed out their ARPA fund project. Seville has started their hall, Wheeler Fulton Road Commission, they closed out. So people are getting their projects done. We have probably about two million left in the ARPA account, so Matt's going to use some of that on some of the projects that we have coming up here internally. And once we we'll, we'll start closing out some of the projects here at the courthouse. Our OPEB balance. Year-to-date, our OPEB trust fund is up 5% on the calendar year. The S and P is up 11.7%, we're up over 2.4 million. We are getting to the point where I'm going to start considering activating our trust fund. And instead of paying our OPEB costs out of the funds that we have here at the county, we're going to start drawing down at the OPEB. We're starting to see.
We, we have finances, so.
We're starting to build that up to where it's.
We can bank it forward as we go, right?
So that's always an exciting way to.
It's good news. Probably for a change.
Without any questions, I can move on to cash balances. So the end of April, you'll see we had just south of $7 million in our. Oh.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. I just understand $7 million in our general fund. Our delinquent tax fund is down approximately $2 million. I'm sure Terry will talk about that in a little bit here. But as you'll see, once we get to the check registers, there are some significant payments that were made out to local municipalities. That is the annual settlement process that goes through the treasurer's office, and that's why that dips. That dips every year, and about this time, you'll see that historically. Not any questions, so move on to the check register. Baby got me a couple of questions earlier today, and I was able, or, yeah, it was, it was you. I was able to have Becky answer those for you, so thank you for giving me that preparation.
The guy running for sheriff. Brett, thirty, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Is his retire rate.
His wife.
He's in retiree.
That's his medical.
Yep, he opts out of county medical after retiring, so he gets an annual buyout of $3,500. You'll see that there.
There are several of them there.
Yeah. So it's done once a year, and it was done.
It's a one-time.
Yeah.
Once a year.
So instead of us paying, you know, $10,000 for Blue Cross Blue Shield, they opt to get a payment once a year.
Clark Hill, attorney of law, three, three thousand eight hundred. He, he's an attorney. What does he do?
Connor Kiel, Connor Kiel usually does the wind stuff. I'm not sure. That's for.
Wind turbine?
Yeah, well, it's litigation.
Litigation?
Been in litigation for ten years or more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dennis.
I'll be updating you on my lawsuit here very soon. It looks like we may have finally.
Finally got a conclusion?
Finally come to an agreement with the parties. We just need to get some signatures.
Dennis McDonald, six thousand five hundred eighty.
Airport manager.
Okay.
There's no more questions, we can move on.
I do have a question for Terry. Hey, Terry, I was thinking, or maybe I misunderstood. I was thinking that when the the taxes came in, which this wouldn't really be the taxes, but I see there's money going to the schools. I thought R E S D did that.
It depends. There's different things, Jan. This could be a border review, a little P R E. I, I don't know what am I, you're looking at. Are you looking at settlement amounts?
Yeah, I'm looking at like Alma's schools and money that went to R E S D, and then there was another school in here. Merrill School was in here. Lafayette, no, that's not it.
Those are settlement payments, Jan.
What does that mean?
That means that delinquent tax money, delinquent tax money. Taxes weren't paid by the citizens that are, it's delinquent tax. Every year for settlement, I make them whole. I give them what was not paid to them by the citizens, and then that's why I collect the delinquent.
Oh, I see. So, yeah, I see what you're saying. So if they don't pay their taxes, you pay it through the delinquent fund. Okay, I was, and I see some to St. Louis Public School. And St. John's Public School, that's, you're not even in our county.
It's.
Have students.
I own land, I own land that's in, my taxes go to St. John's.
Okay.
And O V L C and like other, and it all comes to Grashen County, but then it has to go back out to.
Okay.
Guys.
I'm surprised to see it on there.
Yeah, I'm just going to pick stuff up there because I have to.
Weaver Township, sixty-seven thousand.
So.
Yeah. What hap, what happens, Tim, is that the property owner does not pay his tax.
Yeah.
We have a law in the state of Michigan that it doesn't go back on the township. We have delinquent tax fund at the county. So therefore, that money comes back out of the delinquent tax fund and goes to the township to make them whole for that $67,000. They don't have to deal with it.
And then it's the county has to deal with.
We deal with.
That's how we end up with like delinquent homes and stuff and properties, that you end up with them, is because.
What that is, Tim, is they're operating money, and they need that to operate during the year. So that's why we make them whole, so that they can do that, and then we collect the taxes after we.
I guess I was surprised, because like Alma had $307,348 and twenty-eight cents. Wow, there was that many people that didn't pay?
Yeah.
That's not unusual.
Usually, it's between a total two point, or, yeah, 2.1 to 2.4 million.
Yeah. And this, this year, it's actually 2.5.
So they're late. They did pay, but they're just late in paying.
No, they did not pay.
I pay, I'm paying for them, let's say, to the units.
Yeah, see, that's what I've been talking.
It depends. Some of them have by now, but, you know.
I've heard that a lot of people cannot pay their taxes right now. I'm very concerned, because there's things on millages on, on the ballot. And we have so many people that can't pay their taxes. I'm real concerned. Plus, we went up another 5%, didn't we? And how many times, I thought that's five times now, isn't it, in a row?
The state, yeah, the state, I think it's four.
I think it's four.
But, but the state sets that. We have nothing to do with it.
Oh, I know that. I tell them to people that, we don't, it's not us, it's the state of Michigan.
State tax, you know.
So four times now, they've gone up in a row. And this is what's really killing our homeowners.
I agree.
Who you vote for?
Do we confiscate their house, or?
As, as a last resort, there are a lot of opportunities, payment plans.
Terry does a good job working with people. She'll bend over backwards to help people pay their behind taxes. That's just, when it comes.
We don't know what to do with the house.
Or we'll sell it.
We'll sell it.
Yeah. We don't want to do that. We don't want to take people's.
It's in the mortgage.
You don't want to own properties.
Pay their mortgage every month, their taxes are included.
That's grow, a lot of taxes.
Well, a lot of people do that that way.
A lot of people are losing their homes, mortgage too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's real bad, I know. Tuck Murphy goes out in the summertime, and he, he doesn't go unless he's got 12 to 13. And he goes around, he tells them, like, the mortgage says, we don't want these houses back. Tell them to pay whatever they can. Because also, your interest rate went up and your taxes went up. So if you're used to paying $700, you might be paying 2,500 now. They just can't pay it.
Right, yeah.
They walk off. It's a real serious.
They try very hard to.
Yeah, we don't want that. Is there any way that we can go to three years, give them a three-year or a four-year? See what happens with.
It's a law.
Law, okay.
Yeah, it's a three-year right now.
Yeah, they can go two years, but the third year, it depends.
Three years, kind of, on the other two.
A lot will determine who gets in for president this year. And if the wrong person gets in, I think a lot of people will just walk away from everything, which is going to be real sad.
That's still going. Yes, you're still going, right?
Yeah. Walk away, Terry.
I'm sorry.
Don't go too far.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
April expenditure report.
Revenue and expenditure report, George, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where we're at. Come to. That's just.
Right now, when we look at the general fund revenues, I think that we're, we're going to come in over budget with what we collect, looking at this, because we still have our September collection date for the general fund, which I think will be over $8 million. So that would put us.
Well, you know, we're going to get more money than we budgeted for.
Yes.
Well, I, I heard that, I think that's what you're saying.
Mm-hmm. That's it. That was the biggest thing that kind of popped out.
Yeah.
And that's when I was looking at this. We're about 58% through the fiscal year, and we're 47% through our expenditure budget, which is also a trend that we want to be.
Trend, yeah, we're, we're trending to, don't want to be the other way.
And that includes the back pay that went to the sheriff's office that was not budgeted for, which Becky is working on making sure that we have all of our amendments for our wages that have been adjusted to get to you here very soon, too. Leave that would include that portion of.
Does.
Finance.
Oh, Terry, you can back up here again if you'd like. Stay back here.
Oh, that's all right.
We can't, we can't, we can't hear you anyway.
I left all my important papers up to you.
Go.
Okay. That's it.
Oh. Got the April investments. Oh. That's a good number, isn't it? I thought that was going to be about 1.2.
Oh, that's true.
Calculations were pretty good.
Yeah. Okay.
You know what you're looking at, don't you, folks?
What I've handed out to you is symbolizes the county investment and cash sweep gains, interest losses and gains from 2019 to current. In February of 2023, I began researching new investment strategies. And in May of '23, all of those strategies had been implemented. This is a reason for May being the first month we began tracking our investment interest on the handout that I'm giving to you, so that it would be equal and the same for every year.
Is this something that Woodhill Group helped you set up too, in the system, to track, or no?
No, we, we used general ledger numbers to create an Excel spreadsheet which created this graph.
I mean, to track it in our system. Didn't they work with Becky to do the interest allocations?
Oh, yeah. For Becky to do the interest, to sort out the interest at, at her balancing time.
Thing that they helped us.
Right, yeah, they did. But this, this was not created by that, but yes, I understand what you're, what you're asking. It is easier for her to, she puts in a number and it disperses it out to the different line items that it needs to go to now. Woodhill did help with that, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
What, what investment company are we with, or?
Several.
The banks that were on the resolution, that they are holding and custodial banks that we use for the investments.
That. I dare say we may not see them this high ever again, but I'd like to see them this high again, but yeah, I've never seen this, never, ever, ever seen this.
Well, Chris went with me, and we we did some negotiating and, and we needed to do something after the COVID years. It was pretty, it was pretty bleak, so I think that, I think it went well.
I, I think that, I think our management program looked really well, and you're to be commended.
Thank you.
Commended.
Thank you.
It all worked well. Our banks worked with us.
They did.
It's just been an amazing situation.
The banks have been phenomenal. They, they keep in touch with me, because of course, as it goes up, you concern yourself with, okay, am I going to get up tomorrow morning and things are going to look a whole lot different, you know? But they, they stay in contact with me, and they let me know if something, you know, if something is going to change, or if it's looking different, because I don't play the stock market, and that, I'm, I'm not going to pretend that I do. So that's up to them, and they've been very good about keeping me in the loop and letting me know what's going on, making this easier for me, actually.
Good.
Does anybody have any questions about, about the graph, or?
No, but we sure like it when people come in and give us good news like that.
Well, I hope to continue to do that.
So this money is in, back in the general fund, or it, or it's in the stock? You're saying it's in with this company, is where the money is?
Investments are in with the company, yes.
Yes, okay, I want to write that here.
Mm-hmm. And the investments I bring to you every month, Jan, this is just showing the interest that we have gained over the past year. Because of these investments and.
If you look back down the line, when we, when she's got it, like, May 19, and April 20, of 20th, 2020, I should say. And in 2019, you look at that figure of 172,000. And you track it all the way through, and then you all of a sudden see that line go almost straight up. That's because of the, the. That's because of the, the five percent interest we're collecting on our money, you know? And we have a substantial amount of money that we've been able to garner, and we've been making good use of it for the taxpayers.
Yeah, what I'm asking is though, like, when I'm looking at the April two thousand twenty-four, is that part of Huntington Bank or is that part of the commercial money market? A little of everything.
Yeah, that's the interest rate is there for all of them.
Okay.
The one they don't have listed is that C D rate. It's really good. I like it. You did a good job.
Good, thank you very much.
Good job, Terry. Thank you.
Hey.
So, as usual, I have the investments here. Um, any questions on the investments? That's, and the interest is listed. Then we have the receipt distribution report, which is, it looks pretty normal for what we usually get, and then the bank transfers for the month of April.
Good. Everything looks very nice and stable.
That's what we're looking for.
One more questions before we let the treasury go? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our meeting, and I would make a motion that we conclude our finance meeting, go back into the regular meeting for the purpose of paying the bills. Supporter. Motion by George, supported by Tim, to leave the finance meeting to go back into the general meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Should carry it.
This, this right here is why there's more revenue in the general fund than I anticipated.
Just gonna hold her accountable, but every year it does that.
Yeah. Done a good job, so let's just keep on the ball, keep rolling. I, 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 when I said that, I knew what I did. Any additional public comment?
Did we?
Yeah, pay the bills.
We had, right, could you say, you said to come back and pay the bills, okay.
When you said such, you paid the bills. All the thing.
Motion to adjourn.
I think that's a good idea. Motion by Tim, supported by George, to adjourn.